Planning Commission of the City of Wilsonville for Wednesday, June 12, 2019 is now in session. Good evening. Will clerk please call our role?
Chair Greenfield.
Here.
Vice Chair Posma.
Here.
Ron Heberling.
Here.
Peter Shirley. Cameron Mespa.
Here.
Phyllis Millen.
Here.
Simon Springall.
Here.
Thank you.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hardly for the benefit of our at-home audience, I will point out that this is a time that we have at every meeting for citizen input. I see no members of the community in the audience. But you're welcome to come to our meetings and at this time, address the planning commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for formal public hearing. Therefore, if any member of the audience would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand and we will call on you. This time, call your attention to the minutes of this March, what, March 10th meeting it was. Fairly complex, I-
Was it April 10th?
I'm sorry, it was April 10th. I saw it in front of me too. I found the minutes really as complicated as the meeting was. And I actually do have a couple of questions I would like to have been able to ask the consultants again or the staff, but perhaps I'll do that out of session. Are there any items to be amended or added?
So, this isn't really an amendment, but I've been, in reading the, in reading the minutes, it was hard to see which were statements from the staff and consultants and which were statements from the council. And there was, there was one phrase in particular, statistical lying that came out, and I'm pretty sure the staff didn't say that, but it wasn't really clear in the, in the minutes. But I don't really have any explicit feedback, I mean explicit changes. I was just thinking maybe if we can somehow find a way to, either through formatting or prefixes to note whether it was staff or whether it was commissioners, if that's, if that's allowed, I mean, I think so.
Yes, absolutely, I appreciate your feedback. In the past, we've used sometimes these, when they're a work session, we really boil it down to just the feedback from, you know, staff or the consultant team as a whole, rather than turning that out, but I see where that would definitely be a benefit and we can certainly make that change in the future when we have consultants versus staff responding to questions. You know, we're always happy to accommodate whatever the board wishes.
Yeah, there was a lot of, thank you, there was a lot of back and forth in that meeting as the chair indicates and it was, I appreciate it was hard to record it all. And I think you, I think you summarized the conversation very well, but it was, in reading it, it was, it was difficult to, to understand that without having a personal memory of being sat through that meeting.
Would you like a, would you like us to go back and insert, you had a specific phrase, it sounded like you were curious about, would you want us to go back and?
I don't think it's necessary, I'm, I'm, I don't think the minutes are inaccurate, I'm just saying they're not necessarily clear as to where the questions and the answers were.
Was there some, a particular place that you were curious about that we could clarify for you?
I would have to say no.
Okay.
Anything else? Then we will accept the minutes as distributed. We turn to our major business of the evening, which is consideration of the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, which we're launching tonight. And to present our presenters, I'll call on Ms. Bejel.
Thank you very much, Chair Greenfield, Commissioners. So, tonight, we have a work session on the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. I just want to kind of remind you all, as well as the audience at home, where this item came from. It was a couple of years back, actually, the council was talking a lot about housing affordability as has been a discussion within the region for quite some time now. And there had been some citizens that had actually approached, maybe even the planning commission as well, but city council at some of their meetings to talk about some of the issues they were facing around housing affordability in the community. So, the, the discussion, there were a few different discussions that were had at city council that resulted around the time that Metro released their community development grants for their Metro Equitable Housing work that they're doing. The city applied for a grant under this program and received a grant to do an Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. As you might recall, there was a need to actually shift the work from another department into planning, which we, as you all know, we were very busy working on Basalt Creek and Town Center, and so unfortunately, this had to, we had to sort of reallocate the timeline for this project and put it out a year. But now that we have those other plans adopted, we have a consultant onboard to assist us with this work and to implement the work program under that grant that we have with Metro. So, the city council had this as a goal, they reestablished this as a goal, this, just a couple of months ago, when they looked out at their goals for the next two years, was for us to complete this work. This work results in a strategic plan with actions and Ms. Reibold's going to speak to that a little bit in more detail, and that for us to then take some of that work and start implementing it. So, as I mentioned, the contract is underway. Kim Reibold is the project manager for this work, she's here tonight to give you a presentation and ask you some questions, and I'm happy to introduce her now as senior planner. The last time she was before you, she was associate planner, and she is now fulfilling the senior planner role for us in the department, and we're excited to have her leading this project as well as others in that capacity. So, without further ado, Kim, it's all yours.
All right, thank you, Miranda, and for that brief bit of background. My name is Kimberly Reibold, I am senior planner with the City of Wilsonville, and I will be leading the management of this Equitable Housing Strategic Plan effort. So, this presentation tonight is really meant to be kind of a preview of coming attractions. I'll do a little bit of an overview of the work that we've been doing so far with our consultant team in terms of trying to highlight the overall goals for the project, as well as look at what the different roles and outreach components we might have involved with the project will be. We've also gone a little bit in terms of charting out the process for how the pieces will fit together sequentially and when we think we'll be wrapped up with all of this. And then, we've put together some policy objectives as well, so I will show you that first draft and, you know, we can answer any questions or accept any ideas that you might have. So, with that, at the end of the presentation and discussion, we will be asking for appointment of a representative from the planning commission to sit on the task force that we are currently working on putting together, so just keep that in the back of your mind as we're walking through the project. So, big picture, as Miranda mentioned, the reason that the city applied for this grant back in 2016 was, we sort of knew notionally and been getting some feedback, that housing affordability was becoming a larger concern within the city, both in terms of, you know, price points and, you know, ability to stay in the community, as well as, you know, just thinking about different housing types to accommodate people at different points in their life. So, as you, as you grow up, you know, having a community where you can be young, you can raise a family, you can grow old, and you might change the housing type that you have, but you, you want, you can continue to live in this community. So, the main purpose here, kind of thinking about what our goals are, is, the first piece is documenting what some of these housing gaps actually are through the use of some market research, so we can have a better understanding of both housing types and housing price points that maybe are missing, or, you know, based on demographic trends could continue, we either have enough of, or we might need to identify ways to provide more of. We'll, we'll take this and we'll get some stakeholder input, and the end goal is to have a strategic plan that has at least six strategies that the city will commit to pursuing to help identify ways to close these gaps. So, it's, it's pretty open-ended what those strategies might be, but we're hoping that through this process of doing some research and getting some feedback and talking to some experts, that we can have some strategies that the city will commit to pursuing. It's important to note that, that the strategies themselves and the strategic plan are really the key outcome of this piece. In terms of actually implementing the strategies, that is something that will require some further council direction and some further times, but it's not in the scope of this project, but it's something that we would hope to be able to continue on with after we have a strategic plan in place. So, this next slide shows project roles, and within your packet, I think you had kind of a text listing of these as well, from our draft stakeholder engagement plan that we've been working with our consultant team on. And so, we've just been trying to look at who all is going to be involved in this process and what their roles might be. And, you know, the one thing that's a little different here that we have versus our normal planning process that we bring to the planning commission is that we will be exploring ideas that are, you know, they're planning related in the sense that they affect housing, which affects lane use, but some of the strategies that we might be pursuing are things that might, might kind of go beyond our typical scope of what we talk about here. So, particularly things that might be related to financing strategies or, you know, other kinds of programmatic types of strategies that we might look into, it's much broader. And some of the strategies might have higher level policy implications. So, with that, you know, kind of looking at how these roles are broken down, we really envision the city council as being the entity that develops the final prioritization of the strategies, recognizing that they're going to be kind of these big picture policies that cross, cross boundaries of, you know, agency types and not necessarily will be things that are tied to either our comprehensive plan or development code. That being said, we think that the planning commission has a strong role to play here, particularly in your capacity as being a venue to hear what the stakeholder ideas are, stakeholder input, task force ideas, the policies that they do bring forward, and as well thinking about it from that community planning angle that we usually have when we approach these questions, to make sure that we're taking those needs into account as the strategic plan is developed. So, to talk about the other key entities I've listed here, the stakeholders and the task force. As for stakeholders, we envision doing some outreach to get feedback from members of the community through online surveys, as well as, actually, we're working with our consultant team to identify interviews and focus groups that we can conduct, both with local community groups, business groups, employers, some of our educational facilities that we have here in the city, as well as look at, on a regional basis, talking to nonprofit housing developers, people who work in financing these type of projects, other social services groups that work in the region to provide housing for people, to really get a broad range of input as to what experiences are out there and what concerns there may be. So, this piece, in terms of the stakeholder role, will kind of balance out that quantitative research that will be completed as well. So, we'll have the opportunity to hear that input and then really using a task force as kind of an idea generating type role. So, our task force is pretty targeted toward people who have experience in their housing development, affordable housing development, housing finance, social services, so working to get people into housing. So, we see this as a body that can come together and share their technical expertise and talk about different programs that are available, and try to just give us some good ideas as to what might be strategies that the city should consider. So, they will generate these policy ideas and provide, you know, provide some context into how they've been used in other places, and then ultimately, working with our consultants, we can kind of look at these strategies, these will come to you, you know, give, you can give your input as well and hear what the stakeholders and task force had to say about these ideas, and then pass along that feedback to the city council as they prioritize these strategies. So, from a very general perspective, our process, we will, we're starting to proceed forward in working on the market research component of the project, as well as doing some initial discussions as to who we're reaching out to for the stakeholder outreach piece. So, the market research, what's important to note about that is we've been working with the county, Clackamas County, as they've been working on a housing needs analysis for the whole county. So, as a part of that project, they've reached out to individual cities within the county to use as a part of their data gathering exercise, provide us with an updated memo, some updated housing information in terms of our buildable lands inventory, as well as current demographic trends and where we're expected to go from there, and give us some quantitative information about the state of housing in Wilsonville, and how we're projected to grow and whether or not we can accommodate that. As a part of this project, our consultant team will be supplementing that information to help distill some trends, and they're looking more specifically to, into some nuances with rental, rental housing in the community and how prices have changed. And they'll be trying to see what kind of themes we have in terms of the quantitative data we're getting from the housing needs analysis, as well as what other trends that we're seeing, to try to figure out, you know, maybe what we should be addressing in terms of strategies, so what, what, what are the gaps essentially? The stakeholder outreach piece, as I mentioned, this will be coupled with the, the feedback we start gathering throughout the summer, as well as what we hear from the task force. So, this is kind of the qualitative side of things, you know, hearing about people's experiences, having a better understanding of, you know, what it's like for somebody if, you know, you have an employer in the community, do they see housing, housing costs or housing availability as an issue in recruiting people to come work here? So, those are the kinds of questions we'll be asking and bringing to the task force for their deliberation and idea, development of ideas. So, the next step, once we get past that, is that policy prioritization, so the task force will hand off a list of strategies we should consider, and then we'll, we'll debate that, figure out, you know, what, which strategies we want to pursue, you know, like I said, our goal is to drive at least six strategies as a part of what is adopted, and then those strategies will be fed into the strategic plan, and that will go forward to, ideally by spring of 2020 to council for adoption. So, this next slide, I believe this was also included within your packet, and this is a very high-level draft of policy objectives for this project. So, what are our policy objectives, what role do these play? The purpose of this is really kind of at a high level to describe what success looks like, so what are we really trying to do in creating an equitable housing strategic plan? So, these are really, like, if you think about it in terms of a comprehensive plan, you have these very high-level ideas, and then you develop a list of strategies to try to address some of them, but it's a very similar role to what these policy objectives here will play. So, we developed this first draft, working with the consultant team, based on a lot of things coming through our grant application that we saw as reasons cited for pursuing this project. You know, thinking about people wanting to stay in the community, so reduced risk of housing displacement, you know, that really gets to some of the, the concerns that we've heard about, you know, I want to stay here, but my rent's going up and I can't afford to stay here, or, I want to stay here, but I can't find a house that I can afford, so I have to move to another city. You know, one of, we presented these to council at a work session last week, and it didn't generate a lot of discussion, it's kind of a working draft that we will revisit at subsequent work sessions. The one thing that did come up as a point of discussion was the objective around increased opportunities for Wilsonville employees to live in the city. So, I think, you know, that one, I know there's been a lot of discussion over the years about, you know, obviously, we have a lot of people who work here that don't live here, and, you know, there's a number of reasons why that might be the case. We're not necessarily trying to change the balance of those numbers, but we're trying to get at an understanding of, you know, for the people who want to live here but can't, you know, why is that, and is there something we could do potentially as a strategy, working with employers in the city to, to help, you know, increase those opportunities? So, I just want to clarify that. We might look at how that wording can be tightened up to, to really make sure we're getting at that concern and not somehow, you know, trying to say that we want to compel everybody who works here to live here, that's not the intent. So, we will, as we go back in subsequent work sessions, we will be refining these, particularly as we gather our stakeholder outreach, because, you know, this is, these are developed kind of with the knowledge base that we have, we're hoping that a product of this project is to really increase that knowledge base and get a better sense of what it is that we want to have coming out of this. So, that's a pretty quick overview of where we are right now. Like I said, we're really kind of just getting started to get into the meat of things, and we're hoping that in the coming months, we have a lot more information that we can pull from to get a sense of the direction in which we're headed. So, just for your benefit, we'd like to point out what our next steps are relative to this project. We currently are looking at appointing a task force, we are working pretty intensively on that this month and identifying people who would be of value to add to the conversation. And so, it's kind of a two-pronged approach that we're using. We have a list of certain agencies that we know we want to engage and have at the table in the discussion, and so we're doing some direct outreach to those agencies and community organizations to try to identify a task force appointee from those groups. But we also recognize that we might not be thinking of anybody, and there might be people in the Wilsonville community who have a lot of input to offer from their own professional experiences, and so we do have, up until the 24th of June, we have an open application window for people with relevant professional experience, that they can really contribute to that technical discussion, for them to apply. So, if you happen to know of anybody that you think has this kind of background, who would have some great ideas to contribute, I would encourage you to let them know. We do have the form for the application process on the project website, which is ci.wilsonville.or.us/housing, so they can go there and fill that out. So, we are hoping to have that task force list finalized by the end of this month, and then we will have our first meeting in mid-July. Our next interface with the planning commission is going to be in September, as we envision this right now, and it's going to be a pretty hefty one, so be prepared, should be fun. We will present findings from our market research report that we are doing, as well as what we've been hearing from the stakeholder engagement, so you're going to kind of get both of those pieces together to hopefully paint a good picture of, you know, what the reality is out there right now. At that point, we anticipate that we will have had a couple of task force meetings too, and so that, that list of priorities and those ideas should be taking shape as well. So, we're hoping that at that point, we will have a list of some policies that they've, they felt like they want to put forward for consideration, and so, we think your role here, really, in kind of being in that forum, where we can hear all of these ideas and provide some feedback on these ideas, we think will be really valuable before we take that information back to council. So, with that, that's really all I have to say right now, but I'm sure there's lots of ideas and questions that you all might have, so I would just like to open it up to any questions. I might not be able to have all the answers now, but some of your questions might be things that we want to pass along to our consultant team to make sure that they're keeping in mind while we do our stakeholder outreach and market research. So, we can do that, and then whenever you choose, we would just like to have an appointment of a task force representative. Thank you.
Josh, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, sure. I have a question. You mentioned that you were going, that you already had some ideas in terms of some, I would use the word, social service type of agencies. Can you give me some example of who you're thinking about in, in terms of that, of inviting to the table?
Sure, so we have, it's going to be kind of, I don't know that we have a lot of specific social service agencies identified, but we have Wilsonville Community Sharing as one of the local entities that we are, we've reached out to, and they had actually signed us a letter of support when we submitted the grant, grant application back in 2016. We're also reaching out to Clackamas County in terms of their housing, housing agency and trying to get a representative from there. We're also reaching out to the state, just because there's many state programs relative to different housing programs, and so we've reached out to them as well. You know, some of it is kind of playing the game of identifying the agency, but when you don't know the inner workings of the agency, it's, you know, trying to make sure we get a good fit within those agencies. So, certainly, you know, we're doing that, and then we've also got a list of many others that we hope to interview too, so we are open to suggestions if you know of somebody that would be a good fit.
Okay, it sounds like with your, if you're working with Clackamas County, I'm thinking of the senior services through Clackamas County that does a lot of housing work and advocacy type work, so that, that was what, you know, kind of popped to my mind, but I, there's a few others that, that I know of that, I'll just pass them along and then-
Sure, that'd be great.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Springall.
So, would you switch back to the slide with the draft policy objectives? Thank you. So, as, one of the things that we've talked about in the past in, in this group and probably in other forums is, is dealing with life, different life stages of people as they, as they grow and their family situation changes, or they, perhaps they're a growing family, or perhaps they're retiring and they want to stay in place. Do we have, you know, can we kind of consider those sorts of things in when we're looking at the diversity of housing styles and displacement and things, because people's situations change and yet, you know, they've become part of the community? So, that's kind of, that's one of the issues that, that seems to be kind of just below the surface here, that perhaps needs to be discussed. The other thing that I thought about was, you did mention there was a lot of discussion in the city council, and I didn't hear, I didn't, I missed that meeting, I guess, about the opportunities to, for employees to live in the city, and that has been a, obviously a longstanding issue, I believe it's improved a little bit recently in the last few years in terms of numbers, but I think the, the, there's a variety of employers, you know, my employer is, is mental graphics and, and we don't have much problem living in the city because we're, you know, but I'm, I'm more concerned about people who might work in the retail industry or, you know, industries where they're more likely to be closer to minimum wage. Those people frequently have to live in, you know, Woodburn or somewhere to the south, and so they're driving up and down the freeway, adding to the, the traffic issue. So, the, the other thing that we've talked about many times is traffic, of course, and it, it needs to be pretty clear that one of the things that's, that's adding to our traffic issues is the people commuting in and out of the city rather than, you know, people, if they don't, if they don't need to commute out of the city, then that, that really reduces the amount of, of traffic getting on and off those, those onramps, at least from Wilsonville traffic, and it's not going to solve the regional issue for sure. As far as partners, I, I mean, I, I suppose you're looking at nonprofits in the metro area and involved in, you know, regional, you know, tackling the regional housing problem. I don't have groups in my mind, but I know there's a whole bunch of them out there, but of course, it's all- But of course, it's always been focused on Portland until recently. This, this problem has been more focused on Portland, but it's, it's, the, the houselessness issue is, is certainly spreading. And so there's nonprofits that are active all over the metro county, metro, metro areas
I have a follow-up question on that.
Commissioner Masbach.
The transportation issue that Commissioner Springall brought up in the Clackamas County study that is, we're piggybacking on, are they looking at the cost of housing alone or housing plus transportation modeling of the cost?
I do not believe, it's, it's more of a housing cost. It's not factoring in the commute and how that adds, adds to an overall housing burden. But they are looking at rent burden, type of income burden statistics, so.
Is there any way that in our analysis for Wilsonville, we can have transportation plus housing as the total cost of housing? Because we did this in, in the greater Madison area, when we were doing the market analysis, and the results were actually very surprising. Because typically, you drive until you can afford the kind of price point for a house that you're looking for. But people usually separate those expenses. When you model it, it turns out that some people at least can, if they look at the savings in the transportation cost in their commute, afford a higher-cost housing closer in, and end up ahead, actually. It also made a difference in that case. That's an order of magnitude larger urban area than Wilsonville, but not necessarily Clackamas. So I'm surprised they're not taking transportation into account. But in that case, in the greater Madison area, it opened the door to policies that had to do with providing transit. Now, in Wilsonville, we already have that. It may help show what the benefits are in affordability that people are getting through the availability of the transit services. Although most of the commutes are not within the city. In fact, the practice and track record is pretty poor in providing housing for existing or emerging businesses, and the employees ending up staying or buying their house in the community. They usually have other factors that come in, whether the other spouse works somewhere else and they find something in the, in the middle, or just the kind of community they're looking for is not Wilsonville. So there's other stuff that comes into that. But the point that you make is, is well-taken, that all we are looking for is to make sure that the opportunities are available, so that they don't have a door slammed in their face as soon as they want to live in Wilsonville. But the cost of transportation, I'm hoping, is going to be possible to include one way or another in our analysis.
I don't suspect that within the scope and the budget that we have, that we will be able to model that. But I can check with the consultant team, because there might be some general statistics, statistics out there, that if you take estimates of what, what an average commute is or commute distance, how that might affect the amount of money you're spending on transportation relative to your housing. So I will check and see what information they have available. But, you know, just as you've mentioned, there's so many complexities with how, like, where the people who live here commute and how that affects, you know, what those costs are. So I don't know that we'll have like that fine-grained level of information available.
It depends on what kind of data we have for our transportation modeling and transportation data. Because in Madison, we had origin destination data in our transportation plan model, knowing where people lived and where they worked. And so you could model that relatively in a straightforward way.
I know that at the Clackamas Counties Housing Needs Analysis level, they have, they have the ability to identify in general percentages where people are going. So we might have that level of information available, but I can check and see what, you know, at the very least, I think it's something that we need to note, that, you know, housing burden is one thing, and, you know, it's certainly a factor that you might have an income range that doesn't show up, is having a housing cost burden. But when you factor in a transportation cost, that may make a difference too.
The other second question I have follow-up is, I'm assuming the Clackamas County study, just as ours is beyond Wilsonville, Clackamas County is beyond Clackamas County, they're looking at the interaction of the three counties in the metro areas? What forecast?
I think they've looked at some, like, from the demographic points of view, but I don't know in terms of their, their analysis of housing costs and forecasting where we have buildable lands, it really is more confined to certain parts of the county. It's, it's not necessarily a regional look at housing. Because it's intended to meet, for the county, it's intended to meet their state housing goal requirements, for what they're putting together for the county.
Is it piggybacking on a metro housing study that would have that kind of a context, at least?
Yeah. So some of the baseline information that they're using in their, like, the growth forecast that they're looking at are tied in with the regional growth forecast. So they do utilize the same, a lot of the same information and assumptions that are going into the metro model. The difference then, when they're able to apply it at the county level, and, for example, how we would apply it at the city level when we do our own city housing needs analysis, is we use a lot of those same assumptions and some of the kind of inward-moving pieces of the population. But then we can also hone in then on our specific supply of buildable land and hone in more specifically on the development potential at a parcel basis in our own city. So there's kind of this interplay where we can get a little bit more detail than the housing needs analysis, the metro can when they're looking at the regional model, but we use much of that same information as like the base layer for the, the growth forecasts and the assumptions.
We were calling it telescoping.
Yeah. It's a much shorter way of saying what I just said.
Commissioner Heberlein.
Sure, I'll go for it. So the only, I guess, feedback I have is, is from a expectations standpoint. When we get to the point of seeing this on the Planning Commission and you get to the implementation strategies, my expectation is that any strategies that come to us will have case studies, something that shows that has been done somewhere. You know, while it's great to come up with brand-new ideas, it's nice to know that things that we're going to put out there is, is something that has a proven track record of being successful in, ideally more than one location. You know, one's great, but multiple locations is, is even better, especially if we're planning on then spending our own money to try to implement some of these in the future.
Okay. Thank you. I'll admit that.
I'd like to ask a follow-on question to that. Sorry. I think it would be helpful to understand if there's, to what degree it's important that they've been implemented in Oregon or the region, whether or not there's, that influences the type of cases studies you're looking for. As a, and that could be a question for the entire group, but...
I guess from my point of view, I think I'm less concerned about whether it's the Northwest versus, you know, maybe similar demographics, similar size, you know, something that works for, you know, Houston is maybe not a great correlation to something that'll work here. I think that's more of what I was thinking of specifically when I came up with the thought.
The issue you run into is that the state land use law in Oregon is very restrictive.
True.
Most of the rest of the country is not that way. And I don't know to what extent this analysis is going to show anything at all, whether or not there's an impact on cost from the restrictive state rules. That has been debated for 20 years that I know of. And PhD dissertations have been written on it that says, no, it's not. And others have, have looked at it and said, well, yeah, it probably is. So, but in, in comparing anything that has to do with cost of housing, we want to make sure that the context is comparable. That doesn't mean we need to stay in the metro Portland area or even the state. But when we go to Houston, where nothing prevents development, that's probably not a good comparison. On the other hand, if you compare it to San Francisco, that is not a good comparison either. So we would depend on our consultants and our staff to do in normalizing if we are doing comparisons of success, so that it makes sense. Because I'm, I'm assuming what, what you're looking for is a level of confidence that this is actually going to work.
Absolutely.
Not just feel-good.
Yep.
Commissioner Postle.
It seems to me that a big piece of this is going to be trying to find a way to address or at least consider subsidized housing, low-income housing. Have you had any try, and, but I also know, spending some not insignificant time in that world, that those developers and those property managers tend to focus on the big market, that is Portland, rather than coming to small communities like Wilsonville. Have you had any traction getting those sorts of organizations or entities to be interested in participating in the process, whether it be task force or other ways or, or not?
Sure. So one of the organizations we've reached out to directly is Northwest Housing Alternatives. They also were one of the entities that had provided a letter of support when we made the grant application back in 2016. They do have property here. So that is one that we are targeting, and they've committed to participate before, so we expect that hopefully they will at least provide a representative to the task force. But what our consultant team is also doing is, they're, they're looking to set up a couple of focus groups, one of which they are targeting nonprofit housing development entities. So, and you know, these might be entities that don't work here. That's one of the things that we've talked on our end, that's been a little difficult, is, you know, trying to have people that sort of understand the local context, but also realizing that that list of groups is not very long. But one of the goals that we have is to help start to develop those partnerships and those contacts, so that maybe somebody says, hey, yeah, why not Wilsonville? So they will be included within either a focus group, or they're going to do some one-on-one interviews with groups as well. Because I think that's a question, we had a phone call today, we were talking about it a bit, is, you know, why, you know, what are the reasons that people don't really focus on, you know, projects here, coming here? So I think that's a very good question to ask.
No, well, but, but I, I guess I say that too to, you know, don't, don't limit it too much, because I know that it, it's probably a bigger list in the area than you would think. And there are those that are not necessarily nonprofit entities that still scratch their way through the, you know, the subsidized housing world, the low-income housing tax credits from the federal subsidy programs that, that make it work. So there are, there are other entities out there. And, and I think that, I mean, you know, if, for anybody who's been to these things a lot, I mean, the market's going to make a big difference, and we can do a lot of this stuff, but if we can't generate something that's going to be useful and interesting for a developer who may want to build these sorts of things, you know, then we're just talking again about something that we like and makes us feel good rather than something that will work. And I'm really sensitive to the fact that we need to find somebody from the development world in that area who can maybe speak into, okay, what are the sorts of things that are maybe going to make me interested in really researching whether or not I can viably create a project in the city of Wilsonville to, to actually make it work? Because I, here's what I know about working in that world, is, is that it's, it's a complicated realm, trying to deal with subsidized housing in, in some manner or another. But there are plenty of developers in this area who actually work in that world and understand how these things work, so that they could look at it, look at where Wilsonville's at and say, well, if you consider these sorts of things, you might open the door for a developer like myself to be actually interested in building down there. That's, that's my biggest concern, because if we want to do that, we need to have a focus on how do we get the people who will actually swing some hammers and move some dirt to actually think about coming and doing that here.
Well, I think that's a good question to be asked in those focus groups, you know, what does it take if you could have your wish list, so that we have an understanding of how that might fit into our strategies?
Okay. At the Smart Growth Conference two years ago, there were extensive presentations of affordable housing projects by private developers.
Yes, for-profit.
And they were discussing what kinds of things in, in actual projects, and this wasn't in this area, it was mostly in California, if I remember correctly, what kinds of measures allowed the projects to pencil out.
Yes.
So you may want to, you, you have access to all of the archives of Smart Growth Conferences. Go back two years, you should be able to see the, some of the presentations and the I was thinking, even if we don't have those people working here, they may be willing to come up and, and do a workshop, or even partner. I mean, businessmen partner on these projects because, you know, it doesn't matter where you make your money. They may be interested, and the, the impression I got is most of these people aren't doing it just because it's making them money. They, they feel affordable housing is an important missing element of housing, and because they're in the housing construction, they feel it's their social duty to do something about it.
That's absolutely right.
And we're telling planners and others who were at the conference, these are the kinds of things that help pencil out these projects.
And, and that's exactly what I'm looking for. I mean, there's easier ways to make money. So there is absolutely a component of, I, you know, we're doing this because we're doing it more just for profit, but there are for-profit entities that do this. There are for-profit entities in the Portland metro area who do this, and they do okay. And, and I'll tell you what, I'll see if I can crack a few names for you that maybe we can reach out and get some of those people for you.
Thank you.
One other thing that, you know, I was kind of, as I was listening to the other commissioners' talk, was about, you know, you're, you're talking about coming up with a strategic plan, but financial solutions needs to be a piece of this. What, what are some of the other ways of addressing this in, in, you know, you know, obtaining monies to, to help some of these processes go forward? I would hope that the task force would be exploring those options also. And then I had another thought about displacement, and it, it was brought up by one of the other commissioners a little bit, but displacement is a, is a huge issue in terms of people being able to stay in the community, and there are a variety of reasons why people can't stay, stay in place, so they can't age in place. And, and we do have good transportation here, and that's usually one of the big barriers. But, but being able to continue to afford, and what are those strategies that people can use to, to stay in place? So there are people I know, there's a lot of resources out there that, that deal with that. So I think that that information is there, and it, it seems like it would be good for the task force to be accessing a lot of that. And again, anything that I have, that I have resources on, I'll pass along to you.
Thank you.
What other jurisdictions in our region are doing a process like this or have done it?
So a couple of the other projects in the same grant cycle, I think one of the bigger ones was, our consultant team actually worked on the Southwest Corridor Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. So it was a combined project between Portland and Tigard. So it was a combined project between Portland and Tigard, looking at the area where the MAX line is proposed to extend out Barber. So there was a pretty decent-sized effort around that. Particularly, they were focused on a lot about the existing housing stock that is considered to be more affordable in cost at a market rate. I know Beaverton did an assessment. It wasn't quite the same though, in terms of a strategic plan type of project. I know Washington County has done some work recently as well. Miranda, can you think of any others? Those are the big ones that come to mind.
Those are the big ones I'm aware of as well. It's interesting too, because I know Beaverton's was actually led by their, I think it was their Economic Development Department or Community Development as opposed to Planning. So it was a little bit more targeted at financial solutions. I mean, we definitely, I can reiterate that we already know of a few that we're exploring and so that will be a category. One of our partners will be with Finance and the Legal Department to help us navigate those and figure out which ones might be appropriate here. And then I think there were some other grants that went specifically to nonprofits or partners between nonprofits and city agencies that were looking at specific projects. So some of it is for cities who want to do planning and try to identify solutions, but other applicants could be on specific projects. So what do we do to help prepare a site for a potential project? Like actual development project of subsidized housing or like a transit-oriented development project that addresses a certain income bracket? So I could look into those. We can easily pull the list of applicants that have received funding from Metro and which ones have been completed and which ones are underway.
Anything else here?
Yeah, just a follow-up. Are you going to include a representative from our smart transit agency on the task force?
Not on the task force, but they're one of our internal city partners. So we'll be consulting with them particularly. You know, even though we're leading this with the planning, I've already identified, you know, we've got at least four other key agencies that we need to bring along and generate ideas. So they'll be involved in that way.
This conversation has indicated that transit and transportation is generally tied very closely to affordable housing and housing in general. So, you know, it would be useful for them to be tightly involved in some way.
I agree.
The other thing is beyond traditional views of affordable housing, we've talked about a variety of housing. And of course, we've got this bill that everyone's watching in the legislature 2001. And regardless of whether or not that comes down, I hope that we're going to be looking at a variety of middle housing and perhaps how we can provide flexibility, more flexibility in our zoning for new development rather than continue to develop a single-family only in traditional-style neighborhoods. So that's just a thought, whether or not that's... This is obviously something that the task force would look into, I would hope.
Yes, agreed. And I know Miranda's done some work too. And just looking at our code, I think we're actually probably a little further along than other communities in terms of where we allow things. So it's, you know, kind of that balance between what's technically allowed but what you can actually do to get to that product. I think that would be a good topic of conversation.
The market analysis is going to give us future housing type need, right? It's on demographic trends and all that?
Yeah, so they're looking at, you know, they'll take a look at, they have data on where we're split right now and, you know, where, based on our projections, you know, where, you know, they're looking at our zoning. And so they've got, the county as a part of that process has information on what the planning we've done so far and what's planned for those areas. So they'll be providing some data on that.
But market need is what I was looking at or thinking about. In our study, we found out, you know, I was reading in the meeting materials, the 50-50 break. Ours was not 50-50 back in the greater Madison area. But the bottom line was that the trends showed that the plans and the zoning and all of that was producing entirely too many single-family units for what was going to be actually needed and not enough smaller units. Because of the aging and we also had trends of the occupancy was getting closer and closer to just one per unit as people end up being, living in their own house alone. So all of that was causing a rethinking of that split and a rethinking of the zoning even. As opposed to just, you know, saying this is what we have and continue to go with it. I wanted to make sure that the market study was going to give us that kind of information.
So the housing needs analysis does look a little bit at the demand and some assumptions around that demand. So we will have that piece so we can make sure that... The hard thing with it is it's very generalized in the data, you know, how they make the assumptions. So it's not broken down, kind of more fine-grained into all those different missing middle housing types. It's generally multifamily, single-family attached and detached. And they use that as kind of the big catch-all categories. But we can, you know, we can ask and see, you know, to what degree we might be able to refine any of that in the consultant's additional work.
That, of course, only works if the city has this goal of inclusivity. There are some cities that say, we're just specializing in the upmarket, single-family. And that's our corner of the market. Everybody else can go find their housing somewhere else. This is where we're going to do this. Most of those cities end up hurting their own economy that way because it very quickly becomes unaffordable for businesses to continue to work in those communities with the cost of commute and so forth. So I'm happy to hear that the city is looking at a community kind of approach to this, that we want to make sure there are no gaps. But that kind of goes with this business of, do we have the right product in the market in the next 10, 20, 30 years as people age or new families are formed and those kinds of things in our demographic?
It seems to me important to keep in mind and realize that Wilsonville is not insular at all. The market is certainly as large as Metro. And that it's the, there's a lot of movement taking place in it just now. As you can tell easily, if you drive out toward Sherwood and toward Hillsborough, 219, 210. All of that incredibly rapidly built high-rise apartment complexes out there. That has to affect what's happening or what can happen, what should happen in Wilsonville. Can we depend on Eco Northwest to be keeping us abreast of those developments around us? Help us take those into consideration.
So the data that we're pulling from isn't... The larger Clackamas County project will have information on, you know, everything that we're getting for our housing needs analysis for many other communities as well. In terms of kind of a more regional context, I think they're going to be focused more on the trends specific to here.
I'm concerned about Washington County.
Yeah.
Our workforce comes from Washington County and many people from Wilsonville work in Washington County. But clearly, in terms of the pressure being felt on Metro as a whole, Washington County is meeting a good deal of that need. And I'm wondering what, how that affects us.
I'll ask to see what information they might have on that. You know, some of it probably is going to be more metro-level type data that they can pull from because I don't know that Washington County, I don't know how recently they've undertaken any similar type of work.
Yeah, doing a county housing needs analysis is actually not a typical process. So typically in the state of Oregon, all housing needs analyses are done at the city level. However, a few years, a couple of years ago, when we all sat on a committee to discuss housing affordability with Clackamas County, they asked to get some of their tack members together, discuss the issue. Only, I believe at that point, only two cities had updated housing needs analyses. And I believe one or two other cities were conducting one. But for the most part, most of the cities in Clackamas County did not have an updated housing needs analysis. And a lot of the discussion was, how do you know what your affordability issues are if you don't have a good sense of your existing housing stock and your housing needs? So the county got a grant from the state to actually do this work to try to have a better handle and understanding of housing in the different cities, which vary greatly between cities that are in incorporated areas versus areas that are outside of the county or unincorporated areas, areas inside the UGB, areas outside the UGB. So they're undertaking quite the study to do this work. I think at the root of your question and at the root of this work is it is embedded within, this goes back to the question asked earlier, it is embedded within the urban growth forecast information for Metro. So the data that's being looked at for Clackamas County isn't seen in isolation only as what's happening specifically in the county. It looks at the trends of the region overall. Metro's analysis goes in to look at locational factors, the likelihood people are moving from what county to the other county. They use, you know, trend data to show that, that there's a lot of internal movement within the region as well, right? And that some of the growth is captured inside the region and then some of the growth is actually captured by our neighboring cities like the city of Camby or Malala. So those, all of those factors are embedded within kind of the base metro growth forecast analysis, which is at the base of any of these housing needs analyses. So we use that information then to distill and take kind of the fine-grained information. So if they're looking at, Metro's urban growth forecast would have looked at, what is the growth going to be in Clackamas County, in Multnomah County, in Washington County? And so Clackamas County is kind of starting with that anticipated growth, but then looking at it at the level of each city through their housing needs analyses. So the housing needs analysis at Clackamas County isn't going to get into a fine-grained level of which exact developments are occurring in Washington County right now and what do those developments that are happening on the ground right now tell us? But they are looking at Washington County development as a whole and the projected trends for Washington County and looking at what that means for the trends and the growth anticipated and the needs anticipated in Clackamas County.
That's what I'm getting at.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I think that this project is immensely important, crucially important for the future character, continuing character of Wilsonville. And we need to do it with all deliberation and sensitivity and particularly with a view to sensitivity and openness to our community in our decision-making. I don't see, do we have scheduled? Are we thinking in terms of any community open houses in connection with this project?
So that is one thing we don't have right now. We had this notion of this larger kind of summit idea at one point when this was initially scoped, back before we got the project. We haven't gotten to the point where we've discussed what all goes on at that September Planning Commission meeting. But we have talked about using, there's going to be a lot of data, you know, whether or not we can organize something kind of around that for people who want to come in here. Because I think that that meeting is really going to be where a lot of the information is summarized. So we're not having, you know, as intensive of an outreach effort as let's say Town Center did. But we'll be having a lot of stakeholder conversations at that point. So, you know, if that's, that's not a larger scale open house isn't something that we've scoped out with our consultant necessarily, but it's something that we could certainly use this group as a venue for, related to that hearing, or not hearing, but work session.
Following up on that, some of the results potentially, I don't want to prejudice it. Some of the results potentially are going to be very meaningful to the community educationally. And so I would encourage you to have a forum where the findings are discussed, if not an open house. The strategy is going to feed Plan Commission decisions and City Council decisions and so forth. And issues of consumption and housing is a consumptive issue. The main drivers are the people who buy stuff. So we need to educate them.
So when you say findings, just so I have it clear, do you mean findings of the market research and stakeholder outreach? Or do you mean the actual, when we get to a point of having a draft document?
Both. Whatever is the best strategic way of sharing the findings, the information, the strategy, what the city's goals and objectives are so that you can buy in from the community. They're really the implementers of the strategy through their behavior.
So I think we can talk about ways, you know, whether or not maybe, so beyond September, I know I didn't get into as much detail. We anticipate that we will come back to you once we have that first draft of a plan. So, you know, there might be opportunities to include that kind of the availability of that information and the public awareness to see what we can kind of do around those meetings. Since I think a lot of that information will come through here. And then, you know, as well, knowing that you probably want to have that venue for people's thoughts or testimony to be captured too. We'll look into that and talk with our team.
When the Planning Commission serves as the CIC, it seems to me that that would be a great venue for that public input to occur when we kind of take on that little bit different role that we can.
I think we'll want to look at it because I know that the September agenda will probably be pretty full for you. At the same time, there's going to be a lot of good information there. So we might want to publicize that. And then, you know, I know we did something similar when we had a Town Center, the Town Center Public Hearing, where we had an event prior to that. Now, I don't know that, you know, in this case, we maybe want to wait until final adoption because, you know, at that point, I think that was more of a culmination and celebration of all the hard work that went in. But we can think about how we maybe can build something like that into one of these meetings or prior to a meeting.
Anything else?
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Before I go, I do need to have a task force representative. I know this is also so much information and the council did the same thing to me too, so.
So this, it remains for us to designate one of our members as liaison, member of the task force. If I can move that forward, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Mezba for that role.
The look. Can I second that?
I thought I was amongst friends.
Well, it's either that or Commissioner Hurley because he's not here.
I don't know whether we have to have an official vote on this.
What you should do is ask if there are any other nominations.
Are there any other nominations or self-nominations at this point?
I was thinking of nominating Commissioner Mezba as well.
As was I, so.
Well, hearing none, I will exercise the judgment of the chair. I have appointed Commissioner Mezba to be our representative on this task force.
I guess before we make that formal, I guess, is there a desire and a willingness to do so?
Yeah.
I appreciate the confidence. Was that a yes?
It's a yes.
I would have quit if I did.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Several, several meetings of the City Council have been reported to us in their action minutes. Not the latest, however. I assume that we'll see those at our next meeting.
That is correct. They are not prepared yet.
There's a lot there and I'm sure that they've all been perused carefully. Are there any questions that we can feed back to council? Once again, speaking for myself, I find these minutes very, very useful, much more useful than the old personal reports used to be. So I do convey that to them. Then our Planning Commission work schedule. There were a couple of items hinted at at least in the minutes for our April meeting. Well, the commission decided to focus on density calculations and lot size at our next work session and open space requirements at the following work session. They're not in, those items are not in our work schedule as I see it. Are those loose ends that we're leaving dangling?
No, all of those issues are embedded within the residential code revision project. So that's how it will populate in the work plan schedule for you. And then the request was that those are some pretty detailed and lengthy discussions and that it would be easier for us to break them apart. And so you'll see in July, there is in the work program, the residential code revision project, which will take on a couple of those issues. And then following in August, it's also on the agenda and it will cover the other issue. So those are still on your work program and will be coming to you shortly.
Strictly speaking, those are our next work sessions.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else for the good of the order?
I attended, I think what is the final French Prairie Bridge Task Force, at least on this phase of the project. We discussed two bridge types and we forwarded a recommendation to the City Council, a unanimous recommendation from the task force for a suspension, recommended we preferred the suspension bridge style over the larger cable state bridge with the.
Is this a semi-official announcement?
It's a, it's a news, yes, it's a news announcement, a public service announcement. This is just a recommendation to the City Council because it's a task force and it goes to City Council and I noticed it was on their upcoming agenda. That will be on the return trip probably from City Council, I think, as an informational item. It's, this was an exploratory project. We're not, we're not building the bridge right now. This is simply the tail end of the, of the planning process for.
Rather more than a straw pool, but.
Right, right. It was like a 30% design sort of thing.
And I'm personally pleased with it. That was my personal choice.
I switched sides. I was originally in favor of the cable state personally, but the engineering was a challenge and required a lot more details. It wasn't really balanced because of the location, whereas the, I felt the suspension bridge actually fit more appropriately. When, there's some pretty amazing mockups that they, that the staff, that the consultants did that kind of shows the bridge in location with the viewpoints from I-5 and from the river and from the marina and from the north bank of Boones Ferry Park. So you can, you get, you get to see in these high-resolution photoshopped photographs what the bridge would look like and it's quite an impressive looking thing. So that's good.
Did you say the task force is completed now or the work of the task force?
Yes, that's my understanding, yes. It's, it's, it's not beyond the bounds of possibility that the task force might be recalled, but as far as I understand, we're finished.
Subject to remanding.
Yeah, remanded perhaps, remanded in custody.
Anything else? Then we are adjourned at 7:17. Rather better than 7:00.